I'd also like to acknowledge the loss of one of the family. Mr. Harold Snyder, who drove bus for us for 42 years, died. We have here some notes, I have some notes from Rick Wegman, which I consider better than anything I could say. Rick says Harold was a dairy farmer who only sold his herd five years ago. His wake-up time was three o'clock. He milked the herd, drove bus for us, did farm work, drove for us, milked the herd, and finished his days of farm work. That was his daily routine. Harold drove for us starting in 1974. He was as good of an employee as you could ask. He was always here, loyal, conscientious, and kind. He was a good, honorable man. I never heard him say a bad word about anyone. He was an honor to know and work with. Harold will be missed. So we'd like to extend our condolences to Harold's son and daughter and his former wife and the other families that might... I'd like to public comment. Leave Mr. Lavan has something to say?
I miss you guys, sometimes. My, my Sam Bob.
You can do anything you want, sir.
There are two really good education foundations in Perks County. Why Missing Wilson? And we feel that Exeter is ready to be number three. I'm going to use two years ago as an example. 2014, we pulled in over $60,000 and we gave over $60,000 back to the district. We gave over $40,000 to the STEM program. We gave $5,000 to teachers in the park. We sponsored a field trip for juniors to the University of Pennsylvania. We supplied the funding for the Exeter Academic Hall of Fame because for some reason it didn't quite make it into the school budget that year. We gave money for individual grants to teachers. And Color Run was such a spectacular success. And we gave money back to the four APTs and we picked up three really good members because those who gave money back. Now, our money comes from five, came from five sources in 2014. We picked up the $23,000 from the golf tournament. We picked up $18,000 from the Color Run. We picked up $14,000 through the Educational Improvement Tax Credit, which I'll get to in a minute. And we picked up money from individual donations from businesses. Thank you, Mr. Capina, St. Joe's. And from individuals Dr. River gave last year, too, as an example. And bless her heart, Carol ran the gift card program through Giant and Redners for many years. And that added, I don't know, several thousand, I don't know how many, two years ago?
Yeah, several thousand.
So, we've done really well. We're happy. I'd like to finally paraphrase Oscar Hahnstein II. We've gone about as far as we can go. Two years ago was it. We can't put out any more effort than we put out. Some people are just putting so much time and effort in that it's drained. And I think Carol and Harland can attest to that. People who run the golf tournament or the Color Run, it's like rotting the plank. It's so labor intensive. So, what Wilson and Why Missing have is an executive director. And that's why I'm here tonight. We've done really well with our volunteer group. Just imagine what we could do with an executive director. We need somebody who's going to be out there talking to businesses. The educational tax credit, I don't know how many of you are aware of it, but it works this way. If a business gives money through the EITC program, it gets the 75% deduction on that on state taxes. If it gives two years, it gives a 90% deduction. If you couple that with the federal income tax deduction, a business could theoretically make money by contributing to the EITC program. We need somebody who's going to get out there and contact businesses for us. We pulled in $14,000. Two years ago, I can tell you Wilson made many, many times that what they pulled in. Now, Wilson pays for the, pays for the director. Director spends half of his time on community relations and half of his time on foundation work. I'm not sure what Why Missing does, but Mr. Hamburger might know better than I. So what I'm here to do tonight is to say, we need help. What we're asking is if you could provide a $50,000 pool of seed money, then we can draw some to help pay for executive director. We put $25,000 away from last year for this, so we need help from you. We pulled in $60,000. I can tell you, if we're even just modestly successful compared to Wilson, we're going to pull in three times that. And this person, this position will eventually pay for itself. That's what we're hoping. A foundation, a good foundation has a community behind it. Everybody's working to the same goal. And there are parents out there and people in business who just want to be a part of this because they say, this is a chance for me to help the school district. And to make it something exciting. The interest is out there. And I think I would also add, when Tom had donated this $67,000 scoreboard last year, he gave it to the foundation. There are several good reasons why he did, but I will not go into those tonight. Carol, would you like to add anything?
You didn't find.
So, if, talk it over and say, yes, I think in the long run, the district's going to benefit from this. That's now, we're ready to roll.
So, critical to the success of anybody in this position is going to be the people that have been running the organization for the last several years. So, my hope is that if the board decides to put money toward the position, that the people that are involved will at least maintain some involvement to assist the person in at least in the transition.
If we get a, we can the director, I will stay on for as long as is necessary, so that person's home. And I'm sure Carol will. And Nick, Dr. Corvo and Dr. Martin also plan to stay on. So, I think we're in excellent shape.
Ken, you said you put $25,000 away towards this?
Yes.
So when you say $50,000 seed money, are you talking $25,000 from us and $25,000 from you?
$50,000 from you.
Okay.
We're not sure if we want to go part-time or full-time. We've never discussed this in detail because we frankly didn't know if we were ever going to get them. So, we're going to step in. Now, the chances are definitely viable. As soon as we hear from you, we're ready to move.
What kind of person would you look for to fill this position?
Well, first, it depends on if we go part-time or full-time. We need somebody with some kind of educational background. That would be great. I'm not sure if we can do it. I don't know how many people are going to line up for this job. So, I'd like...
Yeah, I would thought maybe it's more a business marketing type person.
It probably is it. I guess, I really don't know what to think yet, as an employee.
There's a lot of marketers that dabble in this stuff, but you really do need to have somebody who knows how to ask for money. And a marketer doesn't necessarily know how to ask for money. A good foundation person will have a marketing skill, but if that person's not comfortable asking for money, and I'm talking about making true asks, not, you know, you ask somebody for $10,000, you really should be asking them for $100,000 because they have the ability to give. You know, that's the other component of this. Sometimes we're happy when we get $10,000 and we could have walked away with $100,000. So that person's got to have a true development, fund development background, who knows how to assess the potential pool of donors and who's not afraid to ask. I wouldn't look at an advertising or a marketing person because they may not have that fundamental skill. Bottom line, the success of this position is going to be based on how much money can you raise.
Right. It's an intangible thing, say, we know what we're looking for, but you know, we can find it anywhere.
Do you anticipate then that this would be an individual who's employed by ourselves, would be a private contractor, which you're...
Well, you know, you're welcome to, to give your opinion on this. Right now, I think we, we're willing to do it ourselves, handle our payroll. If you want to do it, that's fine with us, probably. I'm not entirely sure of that, but we just want to get started and make it easy and we count on everybody. If two or three years down the line, you say, yeah, this is a good thing, so we'll bring them on board accident because we can give them a retirement that a program that we have. That's to be decided.
You know, it sounds, it sounds like the committee will still continue to exist because that's going to really be the group to come work with this individual to drive the program.
Absolutely.
The way you're looking at this going forward and comparing it to Why Missing, to Wilson, I'm a little challenged here just because of the commercial district of Wilson. Which remember, Exeter and Wilson, we're kind of like here and they're there. So I think we'd have to have a realistic goal, unless we're looking beyond the borders of Exeter and our, our, I mean, like, certainly...
I understand exactly what you're saying. It's, that's why we're not shooting through the moon there.
Yeah, I had the opportunity to spend some time. Erie School District has this position. And I had an opportunity to spend some time with a woman at a school boards conference. And she really said that, you know, you need to just go, you need to continually go after the alumni. That's, and it doesn't make any difference where they are, as long as they're online. That that's the, that's the greatest potential that they've seen. Since she's been on board, they've increased their fundraising almost tenfold.
I know you talked with Dr. Phillips. Does the board feel that we need to get together with the people on the foundation? We're a short meeting sometime, a few reps from the board, and you talk it over with a few reps from the foundation, and that'd be okay?
To Russ's point, you know, I've heard that the foundation and alumni groups don't mesh well. And, you know, and I don't know if that's true or not, but if that is true, then this thing would be still going forward.
Well, we've been, we've been trying to mend tensions here. Something that, that came about through one individual and it's tough, but I can tell, I can tell you the history of it. The alumni association isn't really pulling in that much money. So that's not even being, you know, tapped. And there is a big reservoir out there for us to go to. And ultimately, this is where we want to go.
We work our way through it, but I think that's something we're realistic about. You guys have a plan and it's great.
I think I'd like to go back to Rob's idea of getting together because I think that we, and I don't think it'd take a lot of time actually. We, the board, the administration, and the foundation as well, have, and so we could bring together sort of a consensus about what we're looking at, how we can do this, help us all go forward. And we have a better sense of what we needed and how we can follow through. You know, everyone sitting here has their different experiences concerning the administration. People have had different experiences on the foundation board. People have had different experiences. So there's an accumulation out there. I mean, there's the potential for accumulation of a lot of really good information. And because I think I agree with Rob that getting together, talking about it a couple times, might do me any help.
I don't even know if we need it a couple times.
Well, more than once, maybe.
I think we just need the board to understand which direction the foundation is headed. I know that the administration had some considerations. In fact, I think, in one, at the maximum, two meetings, if you're holding them an hour apiece, we ought to be able to come to that consensus. Because it's not like the foundation's going to be making it up as you apply. It's going to be presented, sure.
Yeah, I just, one thought that I have, you know, along those lines is I'm wondering whether it would be of value, I think it would be of value, to ask the foundation to submit a written proposal of some form. So we can take a look at it, maybe modify, edit it as we go, so we have a real clear idea of what we're talking about. I mean, unless things are in writing, the board's going to be somewhat, you know, elusive sometimes. And having something in writing, job description, you know, duration of the proposal as it pertains to the type of funding that you're requesting, you know, the nature of the foundation, who's going to be responsible, and so forth, for what. I think it'd be very helpful.
Okay.
Anything to do that, Ken?
I'll call a meeting Monday night.
And I don't, I don't want this, I don't want the, if you remember, I first came on the board, I blew my top because somebody told me something that's going to take two years. And I don't want to see this go for two years.
If we, we mapped something out already, we wrote a letter to this board and had a discussion some months ago on that, which I think could serve as a basis for what we're asking Mr. Lavan to provide. I don't know if you still have that. I tried to find it. I couldn't find it. I'll go through my emails again. But I think we did lay out, some months ago, we had a discussion with some other committee about what the potential role is that this person can fill in that job. So we'll see.
I think if we're, if we're going to create a position, I think we need a job description. I would feel much, I would feel much better about it.
We do have one...
I would think they're out there somewhere. I think we can find something that can match jobs.
Could I have a couple volunteers? Russ, Mike, anyone else interested?
I'm not interested, but could I add a piece to the conversation?
You didn't say anything.
I think one of the interesting things I found as I was looking through these different foundations is that they have, if you're, when you're sharing this or meshing it with the school district, is that you have one body who is the public information officer, the public relations person. And that's a very specific kind of a job. And then you have the other person who is the fund development person. And they kind of mesh some of the things that they can share and some of the information that they can share, but they also are significantly occupied with their own positions. And it's the schools that seem to have the public relations person. So when I suggested that perhaps we should, we should get together for a conversation, that might be one of the things that we would want to look at, to say, well, how is this all going to work together so that we truly better, and I agree, we don't have the focus to years or three years. I think we just have to look at these designs, which are probably unfamiliar to most of us, but which clearly are done by a lot of school districts, including the school districts. I hope there are five foundations in Perks County, but Why Missing and Wilson and Niflin have these two components that seem to work well together. So that's why I was suggesting that perhaps a conversation...
Dr. Phillips, would you able to take the room?
Absolutely.
Go throw it back in your court.
Okay.
When you're ready, be Russ and Mike from here. And Dr. Phillips will have people from there, and he'll bring the people from the foundation. For those of you who are not aware of it, this board provided something like $15,000 seed money many years ago. Ten, twelve years ago.
Eight.
Eight? Time flies.
All right, you went correct.
Time flies, right. And the foundation has since paid that back with premiums. And they have contributed measurably to our being able to provide our people with technology and other things that we could not afford with the budget. So this is not some social club. They've done good work and it's in your hands, Ken.
Who's my contact person here?
He's the only one that's not moving toward it.
Okay, this is a part-time job for the board. Thank you, Ken. I do not have it. I have that in my...
Did you find it?
I'll get it.
Send it to me.
I'll get it. I'll send it to Ken.
Ken, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to bring up a title of discussion? If not, we'll move on to the district-wide facilities study request or proposal results.
I can start out. In board docs, in the, actually, last week you were received in your content area a copy of the three proposals that were received. We had mailed the proposal to four different architecture firms. Facility committee decided that we would limit it because we didn't really want to entertain thirty or forty proposals. So we just opened it to the whole community. One of them defined, we received proposals from AEM Architects, KCBA, and Milenburg Green. What is included in public content are the cost results of that. And looking at just the base fee, KCBA, $32,550, AEM Architects, $38,000, Milenburg Green, $50,500. What was included in the current year budget was $35,000. This is a request for professional services, so there's no obligation to award it to the lowest fee. They all complied with the requests, the information that we requested. It was a very straightforward, simple request. We're looking for a facility, district-wide facility study, to really look at the condition of our facilities, also look at security, looking at enrollment, just to give us a solid plan of where, or a roadmap of where we're going over the next five years at least. Let's see. In addition to the base fee, we asked what the update fee would be because you need a facility study in order to go through a PlanCon project to get, do a major renovation of one of our buildings like Maureen, for example, and we want the university. We have to go to the state, go through the PlanCon process, but you require to have a feasibility study. So we asked what the fee would be to update it. And AEM, we charge an additional $10,000. Milenburg Green, $6,800. KCBA's proposal, we're not charging update fee, but they did offer something a little different in enrollment option. They partnered with a company called Decision Insight, which has more of an elaborate enrollment product. And just learning more about it is getting through these proposals. I think it almost does the mapping for you of your whole district, something like maybe some transportation software packages to do that you can move through the district, just as everybody thought it out. At this point, I don't know anymore about that. I don't know anyone who uses it. So looking at those that are close to what our budget was, our KCBA, AEM, we've interviewed these three firms before when we were looking at the transportation center project. And we had selected AEM as the architect. I'm still in the process, well, with Mr. Pitts' resignation and how the thing's taking priority. We wanted to get this to the board because our concern is letting it go another month. And, you know, getting someone or approving someone to move ahead with this coincide with our Mr. Pitts' replacement might be a good idea. They could really work closely together in putting together this study. But in the administrative content area, which I, I'm just getting recommendations now from, of course, I go to business managers. We'll have to reach out to facility directors as well. I've received one comment, and you can read in there, Governor Medwin has used AEM. Okay, let me step back again. AEM completed 31 feasibility studies and 51 major projects. KCBA has completed 36 facility studies and over 200 major construction projects. I've listed here these school districts that are in place, so that AEM or KCBA. And again, I'm still getting recommendations. I've gotten good recommendations for AEM and some good for KCBA. The one thing I've heard from a couple other business managers about KCBA is a particular engineering firm that they've partnered with in the past, but I don't see that name in that proposal. There were issues, so they cautioned us on, make sure you know who they outsourced their work to. Wilson's business manager would not recommend it. So I had a discussion with Dr. Hamburger, and he does have experience with KCBA. If OJ Roberts, someone haven't talked with him, they might have OJ Roberts. So that's where I'm at. We wanted to get, bring this to the board's attention. You know, what other information, besides me getting more recommendations, what information would you like after looking at the...
In light of Mr. Pitts' resignation, I was just wondering if it wouldn't be, wouldn't it be more prudent to get Mr. Pitts' replacement in place and have that person at least to feel for the lay of the land before you expect them to jump in on something like this?
Sure. One of the things we thought about though is it's going to take some time for these people to get in their timeframe anyway. And the person that's coming on would be a great way for them to learn the district by shadowing these people, seeing all our buildings from ground up.
I have a question about this enrollment option. I know you were just describing it, but they're going to, they're going to do enrollment projections for us in this whole review, right? Or what is this...
Well, this option is kind of an alternate. It's an alternate to the typical method of using PDA, PDE data, but also modifying it based on what's going on in our own district. And that's what AEM uses more... And that's what AEM uses more of a PDE model, which is included in the fee, the base fee. But KCBA is just offering something which is, does more, and I'm not sure we need that.
Is there a reason?
I haven't evaluated it closely enough.
My own advice, because as I recall, we've done this a few times, now we've done the building projects, and the enrollment projections or numbers that come up all the good luck you think that's a lot of people say.
Carol, can I say, I've had experience with Decision Insight, use them. You know, one of the benefits of Decision Insight is that they provide geocoding for every student in the district. So when you look at their mapping structure and how they develop district boundaries, let's say, particularly for elementary school enrollment, and being able to determine, you know, where kids should go and what's the best pattern, particularly if we have an over enrollment school versus under enrollment school and we have to try to reconfigure, it's a very easy process of using that software. Now, if you use a, you know, and integrate it into a plan like this, you know, with an organization like, like they're describing here, or you contract separately, Decision Insight would probably stay the art, you know, when it comes to a way for district, I don't like to do enrollment projections, but doing the district mapping and geocoding, particularly when they're looking, as I said before, looking at maybe schools that have to be rebalanced in terms of where student populations are. So, but my experience with them was excellent, and they provide more options than you can imagine, you know. And see, it's a great system that you can actually use, parents can use too. I mean, once you, once you subscribe to their system as a school district, you can actually put this on your, on your website with your district map, and parents can enter their proposed address into the system and they can tell you, you know, exactly what elementary school you would go to, which is all the information that's required.
Do you think they're as good at the bus schedules as we are at saving money on our bus schedules by our district?
I mean, I don't know if we use BusBoss or anything like that, but I think sometimes districts use an alternate system for bus, for transportation issues. But this was, this is, a lot of this is enrollment forecasting, and if we're looking at down the road, it's not a bad idea to have a clear forecast, particularly when we look at the way our, our facilities, you know, are impacted by our student, our declining student population.
You refer to that as a subscription. Is it a recurring cost?
Yeah, it's an annual cost that you would incur, although I would imagine when they do it through, through districts, you know, this is, this looks a little pricey, this thirteen thousand that they list for Decision Insight. So that might include a multi-year, you know, of costs for that, because I, my recollection is that if you subscribe to it, it's probably, this district is probably closer to five to eight thousand dollars a year.
Where it's gone up. They may have had a, you know, they may have had a software update. As a recurring cost, I think that we need to be clear on.
Right, and that's a very good question. I will, I'll ask that question, gather more information, and I'm waiting for responses. I've sent out emails for recommendations and I can share that before, in the next couple days.
So the reason there is no update fee for this company is because they assume that you're going to subscribe for this?
Well, we would deal directly with Decision Insight, so we would, as from my understanding, pay them direct, so they're marked up coming under our budget. But do they want to get our businesses out while there's no update fee?
Or is the enrollment projection being considered update and is it, like I said, is it an annual cost?
Right. Or obviously they don't, KCBA is not going to do the enrollment part of it, so it's this other firm, so.
Our original purpose was a facility study. So I'm thinking, if we go back to original purpose, I'd like to know, and maybe not tonight, which of the three firms can address the original purpose in the best way? You know, I mean, since the Decision Insight, I mean, we could contract with them anytime when we feel the need for enrollment.
The demographic component was part of.
Right. The demographic enrollment was part of it, just because you have to know what your population's going to be in order to get your building along.
Yes. And most of that data we have is available through the state.
Right. Yeah.
Well, we know our enrollment from year to year.
Well, they would, these architectural firms, there is a component, needs the proposals to do enrollment projections. Decision Insight, obviously, it's a model, you know, something that can be.
It's more sophisticated.
More sophisticated and use over a period of time.
And just because of, you know, the inconsistent result we got with the Owatonna Creek project and how that was obviously no good at all, those projections, I'd love to see if there's another model out there that can give us some better insight. I think that it's probably just a good idea that we're trying new things to see if we can really nail down, you know, what the population is really going to be like, not just in five years, but I think ten years is really the target here. What's this district going to look like in ten years? Because when we start making renovations, you know, ten years out is what we need to start looking at, or more.
Well, that's what Carol was referring to. We did that when we had, as part of the state requirements.
But that was a different program, I'm just saying maybe more.
He's talking about the quality.
And my, my comment was that he was good for, because he told us that it was good for five years. The first was good for five years, next one was good for five years, because the ten-year ones were just interesting and watching, if you just, you know, watching what happened in that term of the first five-year projection with all the developments that happened and all, and all of a sudden it stopped.
Yeah, every model.
I mean, it's, it's accuracy goes down significantly over time because these people don't have a personal choice at all. I mean, they, they can't, they can't factor every single abnormal condition that's going to impact. They don't, they can't see a large scale development coming in when no one's expressed an interest in it. So there's nothing on the table. They, they do even take into consideration just the large scale development and proposed development and that sort of thing. So there, there's not a lot of districts that use the source.
And the proposal really was looking for the traditional method of protecting enrollment and all the other things we ask for, security, building configuration. They're just offering something that's more sophisticated. The question is about something that we want, and I can get the answers. What's your question?
If you're still using the area.
Okay. All right. So I can get some additional OJ Roberts.
And do these, do they, do these organizations ever send their representatives to the board to a presentation to kind of give the board some opportunity to back them forward and?
Well, we, as I said, we did interview all of them. It's over a year ago, the transportation, and they could select AEM. If we want to bring them back in, we can surely do that. Based on this, the two that are within reach, terribly, or if you want all three to come back, they would be very happy to do that. The study itself will take four to five months, so we're promptly looking at a final product in July or August, depending on how the timeline shakes out and a new facility director.
Can you break the, perhaps somebody, both KCBA and KCBA, come in for a presentation that you can do a little bit, and they serve it most readily.
Okay.
Everybody else is free, Lucy. Would you like to see the vendors pushing it?
Do you think that they would, is this an interview about, you're concerned about time, I know that, so priming up to get this started, and you're overwhelmed, I would appreciate that.
Am I concerned about time? Well, I can understand, you know, Dr. Phillips and Dr. Days, I would talk, well, what should we do? Should we push it back, or should we get it, move ahead with it, delay it? So there's pros and cons to either approach, but the board wants to ask more questions of the professionals we wish we were.
So do you think that they might come in and, yeah, we see.
Oh, sure. They want business.
Next week? How about next week?
Next week. We'll just see if we can get them next week, and if not, we'll table it until, oh, we must go for that.
I do think the idea that Russ put forth that would be advantageous to have the new facilities director on board talking with the group would be very good for us, because we need that person to understand what's going on, and Dr. Phillips mentioned, you learn from the ground up.
The plan is to have the community.
Yeah, we don't, we want to make sure that person doesn't come in here from time to time, and then we have to try to agree.
No, no, but there's going to be time to select this group, and we can keep moving with that. We wouldn't start that minute until our director's hired.
Any other questions or comments on that? Susan Cox supposed to be here?
Yeah, unfortunately due to her sickness today, we'll have to push this back.
All right. We've been talking too much anyways. We will have four cents of minutes to consider next week. Available to you, has anyone noted the description as of today? We should continue our view, and we'll do that next week. We'll have the second reading on the, unless the vote on the policy one thirty-eight on the English proficiency program. Has anyone seen anything that they want to modify here?
Could we go to the minutes of February twenty-fourth? Was that special voting meeting?
Right.
States that I was absent, I was wondering if it could be noted that I was doing board business in another place.
Hey.
I have a question on the policy one for you.
Yes.
Seems like in a number of locations we had the word shall replacing the word will. I was wondering if there was a purpose for this.
Shall I use the strong word, good to do it?
No, will is actually a command that you will perform. Shall is actually very permissive. That's not a factual language. There's no option. You know, will, you will do it. Shall is. Maybe, maybe not.
You shall do that. Was that proposed, was that language proposed by PSBA?
I'm not sure. I, did you?
Julia's going to put this together, and yes, this was, this came through our, yes, PSBA and through federal programs that she's working to pull up in Hereford.
So maybe if we ask Julia, shall versus will, question, we'll have that for next week.
I shall do that.
I know what I.
Yes, you will.
I know what I.
See how that works? You need to find a way to make sure it's always will. Shall has never been a shall.
I liked, I was asked through the policy, replacing limited English proficiency, that English is a second language. But we haven't done that to the title of the policy. So the title of the policy is still limited English proficiency. Whether that should be changed to reflect the policy, where it says, English is a second language.
Well, it's still, I think if I'm not mistaken, it's talking about, no, I forgot about this one too. I thought it was just identified them differently. Students with limited English proficiency and then English as a second language, identifying them as separate groups.
As two different groups?
Well, that's way.
Oh, well, this is the LEP identifying the students and the ESL is defining the instruction.
The program.
Yeah, the program.
That is a.
Something, I sent a special email.
Yeah, we've been going back and forth, this was like two weeks ago, actually, Dave and I have been going through it, and that's my understanding.
Yeah. Well, my biggest concern was that we, we had included just the abbreviated terms in the, in the policy without defining them. So I think that some of the reasons here actually did expand that, but then there are obviously some additional aspects of design, performance, the cigarette regulations for the program. I think it's the state program that's following the ELP though. If you want to stay consistent with what the state, the state.
I also think that's what their data requires also.
Maybe you can put in parentheses for the people who can't figure out what it was.
We make more sense if we get rid of all the red line and. Yeah, I think the LEP is our students who are limited in proficiency, and ESL is the program that's being offered to address their needs.
Can we go back just a moment? So will means that you will absolutely do it, and shall means you can do it. Is that what we decided? Or?
I thought most policy languages, in general, to try to make it conform to the rest of the policy generally relies on shall as opposed to will. I didn't mean wrong on that.
So it's not forcefully saying that you have to do it?
I think, I think it would be may. I think you have shall and may, which are the typical terms of art in every policy.
Okay. So I look at this and I, I realize that it's, from a student's point of view, it's workable, but from a district's point of view, it's a little one way. And that's just how I feel about it, but I need to get.
Well, I just, I just guess.
Well, we'll go to Chuck.
I mean, I may be perfectly fine if this was.
Not everybody talks that way, just here.
Well, I understand. One is controlled by the Department of Transportation.
Thank goodness.
I do speak English.
Any further discussion on the agenda or on the minutes of the new policy? Dr. Hamburger, if you have any discussions.
Yeah, next, next week we're going to be asking the board to authorize the expenditures for the Berkeley Tech Center's general program cost for next, next year, July first, two sixteen to June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. And the district's share of that, proportionate share of that, which I think is based upon a three-year average of our student population, is one million, three hundred and forty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
It is, I don't have the exact figure with me, but it's a, it's a fairly small percentage increase. They were pretty, they were, and they have been holding the line out probably for five years.
It's eight point six six two. Did you turn the page over? You see this?
Is there a question? Yeah. And is it three years? Is this new? You see the third page there, nice.
And then the other item that we approved, the bunch of transfers for the month of February.
Any comments, your questions, Dr. Hamburger? Thank you, sir. Dr. Beddick, push it down.
Item A, we're rescinding an action that we took previously for one of our support staff. Part B, a number of resignations of administrative staff, Mr. Pitts, and then one support staff Part C, our appointments, we have certificated staff, student-aided substitutes, and guest teachers. Support staff, support substitutes, and extracurricular staff. Questions on those items so far? Part D, we have leave of absence for certificated staff and support staff. Part E, change of status of support staff and extracurricular staff.
I'd like to do field trips in the 60-mile radius, enjoy them at your leisure, during the five-minute meeting. Are the field trips outside of the 60-mile radius, any questions? Here we come, we'll be right along. Item C, which is, I can't remember. We're moving that an agreement on admission of disciplinary violation of behavior or undue process hearing, considering disposition, support, and adjudication, to do 180767. And.
Question on that, will we have a chance to see that document before we?
We have, it's on the way to us.
Will we see it?
You can, yes.
Is it going to be named to be eligible to the?
With the name.
Board.
Yes.
Yeah, with whatever.
The name, yeah, the name like that, yes.
Okay, woman?
Yes.
Are you going to put that through on this?
I can have that done, yes.
And Mr. Kramer helped me out, because I was really at the student forum that had before 3:00, at 7:30 in the morning.
Yes, you were.
And we have notes.
They're not a day, should be in the folder.
In our, thank you. Actually, it was, it was pretty neat, and it was much better than, I thought it was much better than what we did in the evening, because there were lots of students that had come to the morning activity, and it was a lot of discussions around it, and there were actually a couple of ideas that came around with it too. So perhaps that's a way of, and if we want information from students about what's going on in school life at the high school, then we should go in the morning at 7:30, breakfast is pretty good too, and that's all it means, it's a different. Thank you.
Man, these, these are great.
We recommend that the board of school directors authorize the district administration to accept proposals from Tremco for weatherproofing technologies to restore portions of the Jacksonville Elementary and Senior High roofs, which are out of warranty and problematic. The roofing projects are part of 2016-2017 Capitol Project budget. The estimated Capitol project costs are $290,000 for the Jacksonville roof and $99,000 for the Senior High roof. Firm contract pricing will be provided by Tremco, who is an awarded contract holder for roofing and related services through the Keystone Purchasing.
Any discussion?
I'll just point out that we won't have, these, the firm contract pricing will be below these numbers, but we won't have the firm numbers until probably after the voting week. So if you wanted to move it to April, we're still in a good position at that with an April approval.
Again, but you want appropriate, I think they approve something, I don't know how much we're spending. Board's opinion, please.
I just found out someone who does the pricing is on vacation until this Friday.
I can't do that.
Who takes vacation anyway?
Well, it's off till Friday, you should ask something by Tuesday.
Right, I guess it's possible.
Mr. Pitts had emphasized to the committee that it was important to get our release start though.
Right, but I did speak with the gentleman at Tremco on Friday, and he did say we'd be okay if the board, you know, wasn't comfortable with what they're finding, well, we had, these projects need to be done, but a lot of boards are kind of stalling because of the budget impacts.
I was going to suggest that we might be comfortable saying that the cost, we approve it on the condition the cost did not exceed.
Okay.
So if we don't, you could move ahead, and we know what the impact.
Okay.
And we get the spring price, and we talk about, Mr. Pitts talked about.
And they also kind of feeling us out, well, could we do it in May? And I said, no, we haven't even really looked closely at the budget, the only way we could do it in May is we use Capitol project funds, this is not, so.
Just ask them to reduce price. Maybe we just ask them to reduce price significantly, maybe we could profit in May.
As long as that didn't impact the staff and children.
Well, it's, there's a new product out now, I'm glad you brought that up, and it's an Alpha Guard audio, and it's older, so.
So you don't know what you're breeding? I mean, I wouldn't, if we can save money in May, that's fine, as long as we don't jeopardize the health of the staff and children.
When was the, when was the last time there was word of someone seeing higher? That seems to be fairly recent.
The Senior High, the section is by, was the Science wing, that's the EPM that was installed in 2003, and it's been, been leaking ever since.
Thing with the high schools, it's kind of a little bit destroying it. We did the gym because it was stolen a few years ago, but that's a different roof than the Science portion, which is a different roof than the United States, it's all over the place, but your point's taken, it comes up a lot because they don't do the whole roof at once.
Yeah, with this Jacksonville roof, it's $290,000, how much of the entire roof is going to be replaced? Is there a guarantee after?
It's a restoration, and it would be a 20-year warranty, and I'd have to go back and look at the actual area, exactly the area.
And when was this moved to be replaced, when exactly?
Again, it's a restoration.
I'm going to replace it, just want to fix it.
Just going, yeah, there's, Tremco and Charlotte Butterworth and companies, they are back to coating roofs rather than tearing them off and replacing them, because there's a lot of products out there now where the recoding does, restores it, extends the life. If you catch it at the right time, before there's so much deterioration, you can really save a lot of money by continually restoring.
New questions, comments? Mr. Dizinger, those textbooks?
Yes, we will be beginning a display period of 30 days for a new textbook for next school year, and there will be an AP Art History textbook, and Accounting II textbook, and seventh and eighth grade English Language Arts textbook. I'm standing back there now, I couldn't see.
That's curriculum.
I'd like to ask about the Language Arts, it says collection six through 12, National 2017 with a copyright of 2012. Does that, I don't, what does that mean? How can you have a 2017 book with a copyright of 2012?
Same way you do enrollment projections.
And if it's really a 2012 copyright, how much of the Common Core is included in the book?
It's, I shall ask Julie that question too.
Thank you.
If you will do that, we'll be raised.
National 2017, is that what you said?
I don't understand, I have them with me, and I have no idea. I do know this though, that the Art History textbook is on there, we're not sure about the enrollments, and that course may not even be enrolled into the past year, we're actually told it, and so, just wanted to make that comment.
Yeah, there will only be one section.
Well, right now we have one student, so, we're going to make, see if we can put it in another class and kind of.
Sounds like an independent study, don't you think?
Actually, it's one student, we got the book over there.
And you have a spread?
I still have my Art History textbook in college, it hasn't changed.
So the history was in college and now?
It's just like, no, we never opened it.
Anyone else have anything for the board?
For the board, I was talking with Robin Zup, who was our junior high school school nurse at Perks this Sunday, and she brought to my attention something great, one of the bus drivers was taking one of the students, I've noticed the end of their run, that one of the students had fallen asleep, this particular student is a diabetic, so they contacted Robin, and she said, make sure the child's sugar's okay, to make sure the sugar was okay, child got home, so I just wanted to thank the bus drivers, and the fact that we constantly care for our students, I thought was already good school.
Yeah, I'm just referring to, this is a while back, and I always don't have it hard enough before, but I've been thinking about it, and Mr. Chapina had written an email that stated that there was the, I think it was the board meeting we had that night that had snowed, and school had been falling, and because of that, the meeting wasn't video recorded, because there were no students to video. I really think that we should do the best that we can when scheduling or deciding about meetings. That to me, although it's not probably technically a violation of sunshine, it seems to me that it certainly is a spirit. I don't think we should be holding meetings when, one, the residents probably would not drive here because of the weather, and two, we can't provide them the video. I just think, I only want to bring it up now, and just think that it's something that perhaps we should discuss with the board and try to come to some sort of resolution.
Well, I just, you all know that I'm interested in various of the policy development and making sure our policies are up to date and tangible, so, and I've agreed to take some degree of responsibility for initiating the process and trying to move things forward. So I just want to let you know, kind of give you an update, I have contacted PSBA, just to kind of find out, because I had mentioned some costs associated with what it would be if we contracted with PSBA to move forward with a complete policy revision regarding 2003 policies up to 2016 standard, and from what I'm hearing, it's probably going to run much less than I first considered, it looks like around $6,400. So they're going to send me a proposal, and if it's okay, I'll share that, I'll share that with board members when I receive it, and I would appreciate maybe some discussion on that. Going forward beyond that, I mean, there are what they call PNNs, which are Policy News Network updates that are very important, and I'm more than willing to kind of work with other board members would like to, or administrative team members would like to work on continuing to update policy beyond the full policy revision as, as new policy is necessary. So I just wanted to kind of give you an update on that, thank you.
And if you could see that the administration got a copy of that, they could probably comment on it the night that we went, so far as the cost, I don't think. But when you get it, share it with them.
There's also a subscription, policy subscription, is that what you're talking about with the?
No.
PSBA has a service that you can subscribe to.
We already have a policy.
That's what I thought.
I think that runs about 900 years.
Yeah, okay.
But it's the actual complete review, I mean, they, they look at your current policies, they don't just dump, you know, sample policies, and they actually examine one of your policies, they'll look at your handbooks, any regulations you may have as a school district, and you know, you give them a lot of information, and they, and they provide you with a lot of the language that we would really labor if we had to do ourselves. I think it's fairly economical, I know, we talked a little bit about, you know, the options of contracting separately, but this doesn't sound recently high to me, but you consider the stakes of not having a policy that's not a, which could be significant.
Yeah, when I first started on the board, one of the things that we did was tedious and.
It is.
I just want to say that I read in the paper about an extra grad who has done great things, and has, has, has a father that is on our school board here, Dr. Himberger, and is working on proving, I guess one of his times, during the Black Hole.
I asked neither.
Yeah.
He's a foreign, he's a foreign.
So congratulations to the science, and I think he accredited his teachers here in Exeter for giving him a great science foundation, so I just want to get that out there in case you hadn't read it.
The project is working on our budget.
Any other?
You mean the Black Hole part?
I think it was a sound that was made when the two Black Holes collided. I thank you very much, oh, sir.
Just wanted to also mention to the board that we had some accolades last week that many of you are aware of, but Audrey Nickman and Kyle Moir were recognized by the National Athletic Trainers Association as being a Safe Sports School Award, first team for, you know, their efforts to support all the athletes in the district and make sure that they are as safe and healthy as possible as they perform, so I just wanted to make aware, I know there was several members of the board who were present, and Dr. Phillips for the actual ceremony last week, but it was, it was a great ceremony and couldn't have gone to two better people.
Thank you, sir. That be it, thank you very much.